We ready, Tompys? Wait. We will call the Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 Town Council meeting of Bluffton to order. We have all of council present. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could bow your head in prayer. Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings. You have so graciously bestowed upon this wonderful town. We continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all of those who place their trust and confidence in our leadership. We also want to pray for our next generation of future leaders who continue to make us all proud. In this, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Next is the adoption of the agenda. Anything, Mr. Stees, all for own?
I think everything's good.
Great. Is there any other? Well, we did that. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
It's your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's unanimous. We have two sets of minutes. One was workshop, July 20th, 2021. If y'all have had a chance to look it over, if there are no changes, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's unanimous. And then our August meeting of August 10, 2021. Any changes? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
It's your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's unanimous. We have presentations, celebrations, and recognitions. And first, we have Charlie Barrano here from Municipal Association. He is the Field Services Manager, presenting us with our South Carolina Achievement Award for our population for the Wright Family Park.
Great, Madam Mayor, members of council. It is great to be in Bluffton on a beautiful day in South Carolina. Charlie Barrano with the Municipal Association. It's great to be here, awarding you an achievement award, bringing it back home, so to speak, I guess, returning it to Bluffton in the population category of 10,000 to 20,000. I think they've got the video keyed up, and so it'd probably be better to watch that.
As Calhoun Street runs through the core of Old Town Bluffton, the roadway ends just as the peaceful May River begins. With the expansion of its parks as a goal of the Old Town Master Plan, the town of Bluffton had long sought to buy the Wright family property to transform it into a park. The town partnered with Beaufort County to purchase the property for $1.5 million, with an agreement that makes the town the park's operating partner. Funding for the park's construction came from hospitality and accommodations taxes, along with the South Carolina Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism grant.
Obviously, acquiring a piece of waterfront property isn't the easiest thing to do for most. Through our funding partnerships, now everybody in Bluffton and Beaufort County has equity in one of the most amazing views in all of Bluffton. While the park is not only breathtaking, it provides all people from all walks of life an opportunity to come together and enjoy the spectacular property.
The property, vacant since the 1990s, is located on the May River and features the Squire Pope Carriage House, a structure with more than 150 years of history. Along with the construction of the park, the town expanded the historic Calhoun Street Regional Dock, which is adjacent to the property. Archaeological digs by the historic Bluffton Foundation yielded dozens of artifacts at the site. Town staff worked with the Wright family and preservation experts to incorporate the families and town's history into the park's signs, elements, and landscaping.
This is a drop-the-mic moment, buying this park. And it had all of those reasons of culture and history and beauty and our gem, the May River, kind of at a crossroads. We're kind of at the four-way stop of parks. So you have all of those elements that played into our decision to even purchase this and find a partner to purchase it. So it gives us the ability to come and sit and view, you know, the May River, which is our lifeblood in this town.
Moving forward, the town will use a matching grant from the South Carolina Department of Archives and History to stabilize and rehabilitate the Squire Pope House for public use. The Wright Family Park gives all residents and visitors a better opportunity to experience the ecology, culture, and identity of one of the South's last historical river villages.
Again, behalf of the Municipal Association, our 271 cities and towns, congratulations on your achievement award. I don't think we're doing any photos or anything this evening, but again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this way. Can we keep it since we won it?
Oh, yes. It's not leaving.
Do you have to return it? Well, I have to tease. Dan and I were there that morning, and there's a picture of our new town manager holding it up like the world championship cup, and he was so animated about it. And I was thrilled to see how thrilled he was that what he's part of created us that chance to win.
Right, John.
Thank you. Don't leave it here. You're not taking it, Arianna.
Oh, I'm not taking it.
Thank you. I'm having trouble getting on my computer, but I'll work off of this. Next, we have Arianna Pernice, Destination Marketing Organization, Annual Marketing Plan, the progress and the actions. So is she zooming? She's zooming. Good evening. Unmute if you can, Arianna, and we don't see your face either.
Hello? Hi, sorry.
Hold on one minute. Talk again, Arianna.
Are you ready for my presentation, Mayor?
We are, but we're having a little trouble on the volume.
Okay.
But test, test.
How is that? Do you hear me now?
It's very low, but Tommy's working on it.
Okay.
Try, do a test, test again. All right, speak again, Arianna.
Test, one, two, test.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
The screen.
Can you hear me now? Is that good? Sorry, leaning in, pulling this closer.
Here we go. We're good.
Good?
Well, we were, we were better. Now we're not. Just talk. Well, we'll do this if we need you to.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Arianna Pernice. I am the Vice President for the Visitor and Convention Bureau at the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to report on our fiscal year Q4 results. So if you will, I'll share my screen.
And y'all hear in the back?
No.
Arianna, we could hear.
Tommy, would it possibly be louder? I know you switched it from the original volume output to speaker. If we go back to the, you know, the top one.
Now say something, Arianna. Say.
Hello, test, test.
Her mic.
Yeah. I think it's on her.
Can you turn up your volume?
She's got to get closer.
Or get closer. Okay.
Well, I'm sitting as possibly close as I can. Apologize for any, let me see, maybe. Turn that back on. How is that? I can try.
A little better, just when you get it up. If you could just lean as close to your mic as possible, because you won't see.
Okay. No worries. Okay. So I'm going to try to share my screen, and we can go from there, and I'll try to speak up as well.
Right.
And everyone seeing my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Well, thank you again, everyone, for your time and the opportunity to present our Q4 fiscal year '21 update. So we're going to dive right into the metrics update. And as you can see here, it's a great story. So as we went through April, May, and June, we see these arrows in comparison to the prior year of those three months that we were up across the board. We want to focus in, not that we don't want to focus in on all of it, but if we want to take a look at that last line with the RevPAR, again, these April, May, and June numbers in comparison to 2020 are quite outstanding. And please note that during that March, April, and a bit of May, we had montage closed. So those are why some of those numbers seem fairly large for COVID. As we dive into social media, as you know, a couple of years back, we held hands and really put our, our head together to ensure that we had a strong social media strategy. And when we look across at these three channels, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, our focus from a tourism, travel and tourism perspective is really on Facebook and Instagram. As we know, Twitter is really an opportunity for travel and tourism, kind of in-the-moment updates. It would be like if we were live at an event or something of that nature, we would tweet and post in that moment. So our focus in terms, in terms of growth, in terms of not only followers, but also engagement, is really focused in on that Facebook and Instagram. And as you can see here, we have seen growth, substantial growth in both those channels year over year, not only in likes, but also engagement. And that focus continues as we move into our new fiscal year. I'm not going to spend too much time on that, but we continue to build on that strategy and increase those followers as well as that engagement, and that is overall impacting not only our social channels, but also will impact our website numbers as well as our referrals out to our partners, which are businesses in the town of Bluffton. Here are those website stats that we were just mentioning. Again, I want to bring note or light to the fact that we launched the standalone website of visitbluffton.org back in March of 2021. And so when you see these comparisons, they are compared to the microsite that previously existed. We need a full year, obviously, to compare year over year against, to have apples to apples, but still amazing growth here. Again, really putting emphasis on content, building out the channel, connections between social. connections between social, e-news, and blog, and storytelling, and partnerships, all go back to these numbers that you're seeing here, and will only continue to grow. We had some events the last three months of the fiscal year, and when we look at those, we have here, we had 30 events and nearly 3,000 participants in those events across all efforts. But we have here that event that held over at Montage Pummettle Bluff with the Vice President of Southwest Business, Dave Harvey. And, you know, that was a really exciting event that was held on Monday, May 17th, and that was to support businesses within the area that would be able to utilize this product and this great service that we brought into the Savannah Hilton Head International Airport. When you look at the public relation numbers here, these are Bluffton specific. Again, there was, over those three months garnered 137 stories and mentions. We love to see that ad value. Those impressions are eyeballs that are seeing those stories. So that's a really good story here when you have a FAR, HGTV, Golf Magazine, Forbes, and Thrillers. People are talking about the town of Bluffton. They love the town of Bluffton. That's great to see. Partnering back to media, again, part of that full-front approach to connecting all the dots. We want to make sure that we're getting the town of Bluffton in front of those that are seeking travel, seeking this destination and all that it has to offer. And we feel that those are great partnerships. Southern Living and Garden &amp; Gun. Me, we're in the Southern Living edition for April. We had a full-page brand ad. Again, that distribution was the Southeast, then the Midwest. So it was Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina, and then again, that Midwest area. And when we look over to Garden &amp; Gun, this has been a long-living partnership. We had some efforts that were done in June on the digital side, and we continue to promote that program, and it will take us into the fall. We're going to have some opportunities with some media that will come into market and stay at the Old Town Bluffton Inn. They're going to work around that timeframe of the Historic Arts and Historic Bluffton Arts and Seafood Festival. So really highlighting that fall timeframe, which we're very excited about, really allow them to walk around and see all of historic downtown has to offer. So going back to some events that happened during this timeframe that we were promoting and talking about was Juneteenth. We were excited to be able to partner there. And from an organic standpoint, there were, you know, Bluffton shared 11 organic posts in terms on social media, and that garnered nearly 6,000 impressions and 82 engagements. So we were excited to have this foundational effort and be able to build off this in future years. Our vacation planner is out in the market, as you are aware, and we continue to work through not only the initial 3,000 pieces that we produced, but we saw such a demand right out of the gate. We had gone back and produced an additional 5,000, and those are being worked through right now, which is a great sign. Those books you can find at our Welcome Centers, South Carolina Welcome Centers. You can find them, we're just dispersing them locally if someone's requesting them. And then we're also having at the Savannah Hilton International Airport. In addition, we're working with our property, Montage Pummettle Bluff, the Old Town Bluffton Inn, to ensure, based on their own COVID protocols, that they are not only, if they're not in the room, that they're offering them to patrons as they come into the property. We are in the midst of kicking off the 2022 efforts, and so more to come on that that I'm excited to be able to report to you come the next report period. And that is it. Unless there are any questions, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Arianna. I do have a question, but I'll let counsel. Does anyone have a question or comment for Arianna on the progress?
I have one. And thank you for your presentation. I was just curious. I used to, some time back, used to read Southern Living and Gun &amp; Garden, and I don't really follow them as much anymore. So are you still as pleased as you normally would expect to be with each?
I am, sir. That's a great question. I think we continually look to evaluate the Wright Media portfolio for the destination, but these two that we reference here continue to have the strength in numbers, not only in circulation, but also engagement. Truly, the readership of both are engaged with that product in the actual physical piece, but also in their online and their events that they host. And so I think from a effort of looking how we can further engage and take this beyond the pages of the magazine, these are the right publications to do that with. And so we're excited to continue that momentum that we've built with both brands.
Yeah, I have a question. So I know that you all do reach out, and there is inclusion of other outlets besides Garden &amp; Gun and Southern Living. But I'm interested in knowing what other media outlets do you all utilize in terms of engaging and looking at adding more diversity in terms of the type of tourism and tourists that come to the area?
Great question, and thank you so much for that. Councilwoman Frazier, I think what we're looking to do is obviously expand those opportunities, not only within the copy and the opportunities within like Southern Living and Garden &amp; Gun, but we also are looking to talk to all the great assets that we have on the food side of things, from a culinary perspective, from arts and culture, history. So of that, we're looking and exploring, and not limited to, but coming top of mind would be a Smithsonian and bringing those out there, but always open to looking and exploring deeper into not only the print pieces, but also looking to online brands where we can talk through those particular components, whether it be about diversity or, you know, from a culinary standpoint, or it could be on any various topics that are specific to Bluffton area. So we're excited to build that and continue that momentum beyond the two that we spoke to.
I have a marketing group you meet with, correct, with the town? So I would suggest if any of us have other thoughts to bring to their attention, let's get it through Stephen, and we can get it to him.
Absolutely.
Arianna, I know I mentioned this when the planner came out. You said we're reordering 5,000. Are you using the same publication? Have you reordered it yet?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Mayor Sulka, we have reordered that additional. So the original was 3,000, the 5,000 was the replenishment number that took place in this past fiscal year, and those are being worked through now. And then we are going to, and those were used for funds of 2021. And so now when we're focused on producing, and those will take us through until we're able to come for 2022 with the new book, and those numbers will be higher.
And I want to remind, I didn't know we were reordering. We had mentioned, I think Bridgette and myself both suggested the businesses are not all Bluffton businesses. And since Bluffton's paying for this, I would like to utilize our business license records of businesses, even if members are not. It just doesn't look good to have the mishmash when we paid for it, or at least separate the Bluffton businesses. I'd prefer, but I'm one-fifth here, I'd prefer our business license list and put all of our businesses in this planner.
Absolutely, Mayor Sulka. We hear you. I am going to be reaching out regarding that specific detail, plus a couple of other questions regarding the planner. On the website, I did see reference the 2019 business license, so we will look to ensure that we have the most recent of those details just so we can ensure we're cross-referencing correctly.
And if you want to keep all of your members, I'd just separate it, too.
Absolutely.
I want to see mostly Bluffton. When in Bluffton, do Bluffton.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you. Great job. We'll get with our counterparts here on suggestions of places to look at as well.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a wonderful evening.
You, too. Last month, Councilwoman Frazier wanted to pull from the consent agenda a little to get more information on the Don Ryan Center. I think Mr. Wood did, too, Mike. Our sympathies. We're so sorry we heard about your mom, and I'm shocked you're here. So do you want to give an update? Did you want to just answer questions from counsel?
I only have one slide, which may be useful to everybody as a baseline for what we may want to talk about. I focused this specifically on key performance indicators, KPIs, and the metrics we use that have been approved by the Don Ryan Center Board of Directors Finance Subcommittee. So these metrics are what we use to measure the success of the Don Ryan Center. So I just kind of want to walk you through how we run our businesses. Going from left to right, we have a database of almost 11,500 names, and everything starts with a baseline of a database. How many people can we reach from a marketing perspective? Not all of these 11,500 names are overly active, but we do track open rates and pipeline, starting there. We also have almost 900 signed-up members. When I arrived here, we had 114. So I named this DRCI 2.0, and that represents my tenure with the organization. So membership is kind of the first rung of the ladder from your database to start engaging the community. From there, we move them through a pipeline of more and more engagement in different areas of Don Ryan Center. So we currently have, through our marketing efforts, 170 people, businesses, that are interested at some level in the Don Ryan Center. So we call them prospects. We don't know if they're going to move forward through a pipeline, but it's that first communication we have with them. We call of those prospects, 158 of them, and start engagement conversations. What are they looking for? Is it just a single phone call, a consulting call? Is it multiple calls? Are they ready for programs yet? So they're still working through a pipeline. And then from prospect calls, the next level is called an opportunity. And that's someone who has expressed a direct desire, whatever that might be, a startup business or an existing business, of engagement. So you continue to move them through this funnel from opportunity. And then some of these people are not all just customers from a standpoint of joining a program. Many of them move towards mentorship, and that's the real backbone of the Don Ryan Center's mentors. So the reason that KPI is so important is because when a customer comes to us, our model of engagement is to wrap a management team around them. So it could be someone from finance, could be someone with a legal background. If it's manufacturing, could be supply chain background. It could be sales and marketing background. Every customer has different needs. So by having this pool of experienced business people, that allows us to put forward a team that the customer, they obviously are paying us, they find a very high level of value in these mentors. And having 62 of them is quite an accomplishment. When I got here, we had 18. So through this marketing effort, we have built a mentor pool that ends up being the management team for the individual customer. And lastly, we have now 16 program companies enrolled in the program. We just picked up two new Bluffton customers this week. A retailer who is in downtown Bluffton that makes Low Country furniture and clothing, and now they're moving into food services. They're called Signori and Company, husband-and-wife team in Bluffton, and very nice people, and they've moved into our growth program. So they have revenue, they have profits, they don't know how to get to that next step. We also just picked up our first minority customer, a woman that does phlebotomy, which is the taking blood from people to get it analyzed at a lab. So think LabCorp, yet she goes to them. And a lot of people are unable to get to a LabCorp because of disabilities, challenges, et cetera. She has 12 employees. She lives in Bluffton. Full of energy and excitement, started up her business, doesn't even know how she did it, but got the 12 employees, found us, went through the interview process. We learned about her, she learned about us, and she believes the Don Ryan Center can help her with her business. So we're very excited about those two new customers we have. So again, DonRyan1.0, when I got here, we had zero customers. Relatively short period of time. We're now up to 16, which is pretty good. And from a KPI standpoint, I think our Board of Directors is very pleased with our results. I think as you look at these numbers, they're certainly significant in every category. The community we've built in the area of the Low Country, the marketing, the membership, monthlies, the events. I mean, the teamwork that went into the event for 9/11. Everybody, Don Ryan, police, township, very successful event. The database that we have, the marketing that we worked with the town on to distribute, I think played a significant role, along with everybody else, in making a very successful meeting. And I really want to say thank you all for coming out. It was good seeing you all there, and I think it was a great event. So I'm very pleased with the community we built, the results we have, and I'll be glad to take any questions you may have about this information or any other information we have.
And you weren't here when it was pulled off the consent agenda, but I think you laid out the kind of the gist of it. So did either of y'all have other questions that he can get information on or any other discussion?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mike, for that, and condolences again for your loss. One of the reasons that I know I had questions on pulling it from the consent is as often being mentioned as like the business arm or segue of the town of Bluffton, I'm interested more so in how are we messaging? And maybe it's a you issue, it's a council issue, but how are we messaging to be user-friendly that we're incubating, you know, businesses in Bluffton and not necessarily ones who start here and then go elsewhere? Because it seems it might be a little disconnect in terms of the community and like how does the Don Ryan Center function, what's available to them, how can they access it, like what's the purpose of it? And so it's almost like what are some of the things that maybe you've thought of or you're doing to be able to engage folks in a more user-friendly way so that they don't feel the center itself is convoluted, that it's kind of clear, and the benefits it could be giving to businesses or what it currently does for those centered in Bluffton?
Though I'm not familiar with any of our customers who have started with us and moved away. That addresses that question. As far as our process, how we've improved it. So we used to be on the town of Bluffton website, which was not user-friendly. You couldn't really do anything with it. It was built for a municipality usage versus an organization kind of outside the central part of a municipality. So we've built a new website, and how we engage the community, it doesn't matter where you are on the continuum. So we start with something called pre-start, and we have a model that you can walk through as a menu, if you will. Where do you fit in? So when you think user-friendly, if you're starting a business or you maybe have a business, there's a place that you can slot in in the Don Ryan Center. Pre-start is for people who are only thinking about starting a business. And we have a set every month, same date, same hour, same day, where we have those group people coming in, asking questions. Then, once you think that you either have a business or want to start a business, we have the startup program. That's for those initial. That's for those initial entrepreneurs. Very clearly laid out what the value proposition is, what you get, how it works, right on the website. And then, for those companies who are existing, revenue generation, usually bottom line profits, we have the growth program. I just heard in the last presentation, the Old Bluffton Inn. That's one of our growth customers. We have taken that organization, I'm not going to disclose anything confidential, but we have really helped them organize their business. I am personally involved with every growth customer. I think my background of running startups, venture capital companies, private equity-based companies, publicly traded companies, as president of Fortune 500 companies. I have a unique ability and skill set and experience to really help the financial performance of Bluffton companies. And the more profit they earn, the more employees they can hire, the more successful that business is, the steadier that business is, and ultimately, their growth. So, these different segments, pre-start, startup, growth, very clearly outlined on the website. Very easy to transition from that into the model of communicating to us. So, I have my people's calendars online. So, if you're interested in talking about the growth program, you can get right to David Nellum's calendar. Say, "I want to talk to him." Click here, and everything is automated. So, we have completely automated the Don Ryan Center. Does that answer your question?
It doesn't. I was just going to say, in response to that, it could have been prior to your arrival here at Don Ryan, but that was something that did happen before in terms of there were about maybe five or eight businesses that were incubated through the center that weren't necessarily Bluffton-based.
I'm not aware of that.
And so, I just want to say, just in talking about messaging, and the thing that we deal with is how can we always engage and make sure that we're giving Bluffton businesses, you know, those opportunities as the taxpayers are the constituents of what we're doing?
Well, I hear what you're saying about, it's all about people. And that's why this slide is developed the way it is. As we were thinking about coming here and talking to y'all, the people, the environment, the community just continues to grow and grow and grow. And, look, some people just aren't ready today. They talk with us, they place a call, and they still have a day job. They call us again. They call us again. We're talking to people today that started with us a year ago, started talking to us. It takes a while to build a position in your life where you want to start your own company. It takes time. We nurture people along the way. And our systems, we have a complete CRM, Customer Relationship Management System. So, we can track every phone call, every email, date, time, who talked to them, what was said. And when we engage with them, maybe six months later, we pick up the conversation right where we were. So, I think I agree with you completely. It's about the people. It's about nurturing the community. And I believe the Don Ryan Center is a very positive reflection on everybody sitting on the dais, the Town of Bluffton, and the economic development opportunity we pose for the community.
Other questions?
Mike, if I could, just one question said that everyone else understands. The 898 members, those are paying members?
No. When the resiliency plan, if you all recall, last year went into effect, you decided that you wanted it to be free. I thought that was a bold move by everybody because before that decision by council was made, we were charging. I was never overly comfortable with the value proposition of our membership. It almost felt like we were trying to be the Chamber of Commerce. You know, do a little advertising for somebody, and they pay you X amount of dollars. The more advertising, the more dollars. I never agreed with that model. So, I'm pretty good with financial modeling of businesses. I looked at it, and I, after you voted on that, we brought up at the board meetings, how, and you probably remember those times, where I restructured membership to use it as a feeder program and getting people engaged. So, they get our monthly newsletter, which is great information. And we could still do advertising for some businesses that are customers of ours. But I thought the real value is the programs, the startup program and the growth program. So, by restructuring pricing, I was able to engage more people through membership at no charge and pick up the revenue that I needed to make from my P&amp;L through being successful in really adding value with startup programs and growth programs. And to that point, even though we had COVID this year, which was very difficult, you know, we really never opened the Don Ryan Center for any great length of time. But what I found was, from a P&amp;L perspective, that people want to use the Don Ryan Center conference rooms for different events, where we picked up a lot of P&amp;L revenue because of that. So, these are Bluffton businesses. A lot of them are investor groups, so Venture South, if you all know who they are, they're one of our strategic partners. And they were at the big meeting we had last year. And from a financial standpoint, although we did have COVID and we did have fits and starts, we still ended up the full year at 98% of plan. I would prefer it to be at 100%, but I think 98% of plan through all the chaos we had with COVID was still a very good year. Probably more of an answer than you wanted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to follow up. So, I heard you say that you weren't a big fan of it being free.
Correct.
He was a fan of it being free.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was a fan of it being free.
You were a fan of it being?
I didn't think the value proposition was there. I hear from a lot of businesses that paying for the Chamber of Commerce, they don't get anything for their money.
Let's not go down that road. Any other questions?
Unless Fred wants to go.
Let me just work down. Fred, and then you. Fred?
Mike, what is your revenue source?
Our revenue source is people paying for programs and renting at the hub. Yes, we have a $450,000 budget. We were 98% of plan, full year. 98% of plan, revenue plan, full year. And we were under our expenses by about 15%. So, even though my revenue wasn't at 100%, I made sure to clamp down on my expenses. So, I actually had a positive variance between expense and revenue.
The membership, what is the membership roles or responsibility to members? That 898, what do they get or what do you give them?
They get a newsletter every month.
Y'all can, I'm signed up.
Yeah, everybody, I'm sure gets the newsletter.
Should be signed up for it, and you'll get an email from the mentor program and any programs that you would have when the center was open and virtual things, which I've been, I've gotten a lot of.
The membership newsletter is a culmination of things that we do during the month. We also talk about things we're going to do next month. We sometimes highlight certain mentors, what they've done. We sometimes highlight certain businesses. So, think of it as a monthly brochure of what's going on in Bluffton and Don Ryan Center.
I want to do a follow-up to Ms. Fraser's question that she asked earlier. She said, "How many of those businesses came through the incubator process moved away?" And you said?
My knowledge, none.
I need you to get those numbers for us because you're the only person we have to get that.
Well, the numbers that I know, I guess I can go back to day one when you started the Don Ryan Center to find out who moved away. But under my tenure, Don Ryan 2.0, I can tell you emphatically that none have moved out of the area. You're welcome.
Questions?
Comments and questions? I remember when we did the membership thing, you know, COVID was kicking in really good. And we've always grappled with your mission and how y'all were going to achieve it. And we've been to the moon and back trying to figure out remedies that would work. As far as the membership, the way it is today, I agree with your assessment. It's a numbers game. And the more people that you can get exposure to, eventually, somebody will walk through the door at some point. It's like cells, you know, so.
Exactly what this is. That's what the model is.
I'm okay with that. The, one of the things I was a little, I needed clarity on, you know, you may be using different terminology. In the beginning, when the organization was formed, the word was incubation. And so, you know, like six maybe companies at a time really bought in to the whole process. There were fees associated to that. I'm assuming that's still the case or not? All right, so they're still paying, they're paying for something when they get serious because they need to have skin in their guts. All right, so, how many incubated, or you called it startups, do we have, you said?
We have 16. We have five growth and 11 startup. I use the word startup. We can use the word incubation. We could use.
I'm just trying to be on the same page.
A lot of different words. I just use the branding that we have. A startup is incubation, and growth is an existing customer who is looking to get bigger.
All right, so the only other two things that I have that I would like to throw out there for a thought is everything that government does, especially staff, is measured. Everything. Every report we look at, every staff report, everything's measured. And these KIPs that you have up here could be measured annually. And what I mean is, you could look at one year here, one year here, one year here. Go ahead.
Well, we inserted the system when I first got here. So, before I got here, there was no technology system that can give you the answers to that question.
But you can incorporate that moving forward.
Oh, yeah. I can give you, this is a real-time system. So, I don't have to wait for month end. I can give you at any given point, any day of the month, exactly where we are.
Okay, and the reason is obvious. You've done this in your career. So, the reason I bring it up is just no different than what Ariana just did. It's like, we can look at 2016, 17, 18, 19. We can see if there's a ding in somewhere, in some of the things that we're working on, whether we're going up or we're going down. So, anyway, I would love to have that, all of council would. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up, and you know, when you talked about the ROI a minute ago, I was confused on that again. So, I know what your budget is, and you're saying you did what? You raised?
We were at 98% of our revenue plan, full year, FY '21. That's the revenue. We were lower by about 11% in our expense plan. So, if you're 2% off on the top line, I was 11% under on the expense line of the P&amp;L.
So, what's the number? What was the number?
Well, our top line revenue is, I think, $65,000.
Okay. Now, the other point I wanted to bring up is looking, when you look back at the Don Ryan Center before you got here. So, there used to be things put out there, like from 2012 to January 2018. 32, it said, you know, you look at the write-ups and everything, it says 32 companies through the incubator program advised 140 companies. And one of the things that used to just get me all the time because I just wondered how it was measured, it was companies generate 25 million a year in annual revenue from 2012 to 2018. We were saying, that's a 5 million year, annual payroll. And so, what I would let, yeah, you would have had a field day with these numbers. So, I would ask, at some point, you maybe go back and look at some of this, not to go back and undo what's already been done and redo history. But when you do your metrics annually, you can probably look at the businesses that we're talking about. They have an impact. I mean, that's what this council cares about, is what's the impact to our town financially that, you know, that we're doing, we're doing all of this with the Don Ryan Center. So, put some thought to that, if you can.
Yeah, so, let me address this, if you don't mind. I don't know how much time I have. If you want me to cut it short, I can take it one-off with you. But when you work with startup companies, and I spent quite a few years with a startup company. It was a husband and wife team. They brought me in as CEO. And I started with four employees. That's a startup for me, okay? In three years, I had 30 employees. 30 employees. Bootstrapped, zero debt. So, every employee I hired, I paid for out of cash in my P&amp;L, my balance sheet. And we grew it over the course of five years, five years, about five years. And I sold the company for a significant profit to a very large company. But when these things start, these incubation companies, you know, year one, year two, it's slow-going. I mean, we start at square one, developing the product with them, the packaging, the making sure it works the right way. That's an incubation company, if it happens to be in manufacturing. Some of these startup companies come with a back of an envelope. And they say, "Here is my idea. I am passionate about this. I want to do this. Can you help?" And the answer is yes. So, but we're nurturing these people from sometimes absolutely square one.
I understand that. Thank you.
So, from a revenue standpoint, it takes time for startups. That's why we have the growth program. The growth program is $625 per month that they pay us to put this management team around them, to grow their business. Bluffton Inn's a perfect example. They're doing a lot better. And they can grow and make sure they stay in business along with other companies like that.
You've answered me, and I appreciate it.
And I'll be glad to give you a KPIs you want. And I'll do the research on before I got here, and I'll try to get something back to you to substantiate those numbers you're talking about.
Thank you.
And your meetings are virtual, which a lot of our committee meetings are. I would urge all of us, since they're virtual, try to get on these because it does show finance, just because I'm on your board, I know it. And Larry is our liaison on council for Don Ryan Center. But all the financial stuff, everything's here. It's a really good process that Natalie does for us as a town. So, I would really encourage everyone, it's very important, to see what's going on. And I think whatever advice we can give you on what we want to see would be helpful. So, I would ask anybody to get with him and give him thoughts. And thank you. Anything else off that? It was a consent agenda item. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels where you're going.
I can't believe you're here again. So, thank you for coming.
When I make a commitment, I keep it.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're moving on to public comment. We have three public comments. They are in person, and they come in. And, yeah, leave that up there. So, who's going to bring in? Who's the first one?
The first one is Michael Hughes.
Great. Michael, as you're coming forward, just so I have to read this every single time, you can see what the rules are, which are not there. Name an address. Try not to touch the mic. Three minutes or less.
Thank you. No problem, I can do it. Thank you. My name is Mike Hughes with Thomas &amp; Hutton, 50 Parker, Commissary, Savannah. Engineer that works a lot in Bluffton. And I was before you in February regarding the... And I was before you in February regarding the Low Country Stormwater Design Manual, and I asked to please consider taking a few things, another look at them. And kindly, you did pause on the acceptance of the ordinance, and we have met with Brian McElwee. Tomlinson Hutton did bring forth approximately 50 comments that we had concerns with. We did meet then in June, late June, and talked about a lot of them. Some we still feel are a concern. However, I think a lot of them were taken care of. So we, at this point, Brian also assured me with some of the things we had concerns with. He would look at reviews with logic, common sense, and sound engineering when it comes to interpretation of the ordinance. Obviously, you know, we prefer to be a little more black and white, but we recognize the relationship with the town, and you have good staff, and we believe you will review judiciously. So an example, one of the concerns we had was best management practices. As the ordinance or the design manual is written, you would have to actually install a best management practice to treat the best management practice you've just installed. Brian assured us, assured us that that's not the case, that won't be. And then also, if you have a really tough site with high groundwater table and really poor soils, you just can't infiltrate two inches of rainwater. And he said, we recognize that. So we're utilizing best or maximum extent practicable to address those sites. So with that, we do support the adoption. We understand that the manual is able to be revised, and as we move forward, we're hoping that you do engage us and other local engineering and design firms to help, you know, as we go forward. And I just want to say, you know, we all in the design community want to make sure we are creating sustainable communities, right? Which is really a balance of the environment, community, and economics. So as we look at things we're trying to install, let's make sure economically we're not installing things that are possibly expensive on the front end, but also a burden long-term for maintenance for residents of Bluffton. So let's make sure we're getting the bang for the buck on the environmental side, economics, and we're also creating a connected community. So with that, I just say, again, we enjoy town staff. We think you're some of the, you have some of the best staff in the Low Country. We appreciate working with you and are always happy to provide feedback, and we, again, appreciate you taking a moment to look at it. And again, look forward to working with Brian and staff on the implementation moving forward. Thank you.
Did that not have been a public hearing comment? Should we put that comment under the public hearing, just so it's got a connection?
It could be.
I just want what you've said is on the record. If anything were to pop up, we can always go back to it. Is it OK to move?
I think the minutes can reflect that, yes.
Will reflect that it was during the public hearing for the ordinance as well.
Thank you. I didn't realize.
No, 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 I didn't think about it when you walked up. So my bad. I just want to make sure it's in the right area more administratively. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Who's next? Actually, he has to.
Who's it?
Mr. Hughes.
Oh. Huh?
So it's the design manual that's on the consent agenda that's referenced.
No, it's on the public hearing and final reading. It's actually on the formal.
So, yes, you are adopting the ordinance, which references the design manual.
OK.
And the design manual is what? If it needs to change, we can change it.
OK. We just want to make, I just want to make sure it's on the record. If you ever had to Google search it, we know it was.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Who's next?
The next one is for public hearing.
Let's wait for that. Uh huh. And then we have Sharon. OK. If we can get Sharon. And who's the other one? Just tell them he's there.
The other one for public hearing will be Jesse White.
OK. And they know it's public hearing. Evening, Ms. Brown. As you're walking up, you know the rules up there, so come forward if you would say your name and address, and try not to touch the mic. Don't be touching that mic. Name and address, just even though we know it, and you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Sharon Brown, and I live at 20, no, that's my church, 163 Buck Allen Road. And I am here as, just information, OK? Now, down Buck Allen Road, we know that that's a different residential area. And I met with, I finally met the town manager, had a nice meeting with him and Heather, in concerns about a double-wide mobile home that's right by the church, Bible Baptist, and the single-wide mobile home that was moved to the back. It was, the porch was taken off, and it was moved. Now somehow or another, nobody knew that the mobile, the single-wide mobile home was moved. I don't get paid for that. I'm a resident. They didn't even know. But the single-wide mobile home was moved to the back, and the double-wide now is in the front. The concern is that, you know, it needs to be fair across the board on how we treat everybody. And I'm always coming here because, yes, I live in a neighborhood, and I'm African-American, but I'm speaking for people that I know of color who have had a hard time trying to get their mobile home placed in a place. So this man gets to drop his degraded mobile home, double-wide mobile home there with all the structural material everywhere. And we work hard to clean up our community, but nobody know that. Now, the town manager, nor Heather knows how long they're going to work with him in order to get his structure up to par, in order to give him a building permit to be able to go ahead and move in. Now, how do we know he's living in there? Do we know? No, we don't know. They, I mean, it's not known, but I do know that, you know, our mission statement says a lot. And somehow, the mission statement doesn't pertain to a certain group of people. That's me personally, how I feel. Now, we need to get this thing resolved with that mobile home right there, the double-wide and the single-wide. Because once you move a structure, then it's no longer grandfathered in, so it has to be an impact fee. I know that from the one that I had. Well, Morgan Watley went back and forth with me saying the double, the single-wide was not moved. I went and had aerial pictures show that it was moved. So not only do we need to be fair across the board, we need to get our employees, when they speak to people, that they know factually what they're talking about. She went head and head with me, making me look like a liar when I had to go take pictures. So we need to educate our staff, and if that's not the person who needs to be spoken to, to residents when they're trying to find out issues that's going on, then we need to remove that person and put them in contact with that other one. Because Heather intervened quickly when I said, I want to have a meeting. She said, I need to talk to a town staffer. Well, who am I talking to if she's giving me information? So I just want us to have another meeting with the residents on our road to give us the facts on what we can do with our property. If I can drop a mobile home right there and let it stay there until I get it fixed or up to par, because there's no definitive time period that this gentleman has to fix it. OK, so we need to have that kind of thing, OK? So that's just strictly, I'm coming here as a resident with a complaint. All right? Thank you all so much, and it's always good to see you. Smile, Larry. I love you.
Thank you, Sharon. So public comment is over. Next is communications from mayor and council. I didn't give anyone the heads-up on this, but it's something that Stephen suggested, so maybe we can kick this off maybe in November. If you are sitting on a committee through the town, I think that's a good time to tell the public what's going on, any highlights of any meetings we've all had, affordable housing, Don Ryan Center, watershed, WAPAC, things like that, low cog, that this would be a good time to do that. So I won't put you on the spot tonight unless you want to give a heads-up, but I think coming down the road, it's a good time for the public to, and council, to kind of know what's going on. Anything from mayor and council at this moment? I know, all joyedonuts, I saw your Instagram post, Dan, Mr. Ellis sold the restaurant, so let's all critique the new owners and make sure they still make the donuts the way they should make them. And I guess they move right in, did he say?
He's, they bought his home. He's got 30 days, and then he's got to stay a little bit longer to help train them a little further, but he seems pleased, and he'll think, he thinks they'll do a good job, and we'll know when we get there.
We will. We will all be there.
The lines are long, they're good.
Okey-dokey. If nothing else from that, we move to a public hearing and final reading. This is the consideration of an ordinance to amend the town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 3, Article 5, Section 510, and Article 9. Hi, Brian.
Hey, how are you all?
Good. Let me start public hearing with comments, and then we'll jump to you. So first call for public comment, and you said there was a public comment for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Jesse White.
Jesse White. Oh, she's waiting. Jesse, you're speaking to this one item, so if you give me your name and address, please do not touch the mic, and you have three minutes or less. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse White, on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League, I'm the South Coast Office Director. And I've also been recently appointed to serve on the May River Watershed Action Committee, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, but also state that my comments tonight are on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. Since 2017, the Southern Low Country Stormwater Ordinance Committee and staff have been working towards regional and cooperative improvements in our stormwater standards in order to better protect water quality within the watershed, and also in turn improve quality of life for our communities. Those efforts have culminated in the stormwater ordinance and manual that are before you this evening. And they include beneficial changes that align with the recent recommendations performed in research by Dr. Eric Monte and others, as well as the water quality models for the May River watershed. The Soloco standards in particular take a critically important regional approach, and that will help improve water quality by preserving and enhancing our forested wetlands and tree canopies, discouraging clear-cutting, prioritizing green infrastructure and low-impact development, encouraging clustered development, which incorporates natural areas and more open space into new development projects, and providing long-term maintenance of implemented stormwater management systems through the life of a development project. Each of these components will help improve water quality on a watershed scale, and increase open space, increase natural filtration, and resist topographical and hydrological alteration of our landscapes, which leads to contamination of important and sensitive water bodies like the May River. At the Coastal Conservation League, we support the regional adoption of the Soloco standards and appreciate Town Council and staff's leadership on the committee in developing these standards and encouraging the regional cooperation that's at their core. So we thank you and urge you to adopt these standards.
There's a second call for public comment at this public hearing. Third call for public comment at the public hearing for the final reading of this item. Public hearing is closed. It's been so long since first reading, Brian.
It has been. It's been very long.
We'll give it to you to remind us of everything.
Yeah, so this process has been going on for about three years, if you go back to when it first started with Soloco. I'm happy to give you a presentation if you want. We have not made any substantial edits to the ordinance or the manual since first reading. As Mike said, we went through his concerns, and for the most part, I believe, like he said tonight, we have addressed those concerns, and I'm going to make sure staff is aware of how we need to interpret plan reviews moving forward. I'm happy to go through and do this, or we can just move to the resolution if you guys are OK with it.
Yeah, council, I see you don't need to from a couple. Does anybody need further explanation, or do you want to ask questions, or just, it is second and final reading from the original, no changes were made? Is that the all? All good? I think we're all good, Brian.
Awesome. Thank you all for.
See, when you don't come in person, we're quick. And it's nice, Councilman Rodman is here from the county, so he can see we are moving forward with what they passed as well, so.
Correct, yeah. They passed it, I believe, back in March, April.
If, is there any discussion, any questions, or Brian, on this? If not, is there a motion on second and final reading to amend the town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 3, Article 5, Section 510, and Article 9, related to adopting the Southern Low Country Post-Construction Stormwater Ordinances and Southern Low Country Stormwater Design Manual?
So moved.
Your second? OK. Any discussion? Brian, I know this was a tough one for us to keep sending you back, but I think if everyone buys into it, it means we all did a good job, so I really appreciate your efforts.
Of course. Thank you all very much for moving forward with it. It's a good regional approach to it. I'm proud of it.
Absolutely. We hope to see you back in here sooner rather than later. OK.
I will, I will.
Thank you. He's smiling. Any other discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Brian. We have a workshop item. Is Jared here?
Yes.
Oh, OK. If we could get Jared in here. The workshop item is in, but good. Evening, Jared, and you can come forward. Request for input on alternatives for the realignment of the intersection of Bluffton and Buckwalter Parkways as it relates to Bluffton Parkway 5B. Is Brian, did he go off? Does he want to be part of this to hear it, or do you think we need him?
I asked Kevin to step in to represent growth management to be able to hear it.
Great. Jared?
As part of the planning side.
Jared, come on up. Thank you.
So thank you, Mayor Soloco, and members of council, opportunity to come and talk to you guys tonight. I think we may have Brian beat that this has been going on much longer than three years. So also, so the project that we're talking about is the Bluffton Parkway-Buckwalter Parkway intersection relocation. You would think, as an engineer, we'd already have an acronym for that, but I don't, so if anybody has any suggestions, by all means, we'll take those. Before we get started into the options, I wanted to kind of go back and talk about the project itself and how this came about. Not so much about the history. You guys could probably teach me about the history, but specifically about the engineering. So this project was part of what was, what is known as 5B, Bluffton Parkway 5B. The initial project study started in 2006, so what is that? That's a really long time. So in 2006, and then public meetings were held in 2007. And again, this was for the entire parkway, not just the intersection that we're talking about. From there, we went through the same process that DOT is currently going through now on the 278 Bridge Corridor. So we went through environmental assessment and had a finding of no significant impact, a Fonzee, that was approved by Federal Highway in 2008. And that's important because that whole process is the process that's required if you try to petition your project or set it up for federal funding. So that process was completely done for the Bluffton Parkway Phase 5B. The plans at that point were developed to a 60% or 70% plan, so that's typically when right-of-way acquisition occurs at that level, as well as permits. So we had our environmental assessment, and we had our permits for the project at that point in 2008. At that point, it sat, and it sat for a long while. And then in 2010, a request was made by you guys at the town to look at adjusting the alignment, specifically at the intersection, not the entire alignment, but just the intersection where we're talking about. So HDR, the engineer of record, looked at that, and it ran through public facilities at a county in 2011, and they realigned that section from where it was relocated down to the south, which was about 700 feet from its current location, and relocated that up to about 350 feet. So it's kind of split the gap of where that roadway is. The plans were then redesigned and updated to that same 60% to 70% level, and then they sat. So that was February 2014, the last time the plans had been touched. And again, we had gone through the NEPA process on the earlier plans, but we had not gone back through on this. So we have an approved environmental assessment from the original, but have not updated in 2014, nor have we done anything since. So then, it says, fast forward to where we are. So there was a letter written by town manager at the time in 2000, late 2019, to the county administrator at the time, at the request of Town Council to move forward at least on this intersection. Don't look at the whole thing, let's just get this intersection done. I started in the summer of 2020, and at that point, I was tasked with, hey, take a look at this, tell me where we are, and then make a presentation to public facilities. So I started doing some research, got with HDR, the engineer of record, hey, where are we? They kind of back-briefed me with everything I just briefed you guys with. And then I took that to public facilities. And then I took that to public facilities in the fall of 2020 and said, okay, here you guys are. I was fully expecting just to give a for information only brief, and I came away with a yes. I wasn't really sure what yes meant, but come to find out, yes was yes, move forward with the intersection alignment, and here's $2.5 million. Go. And it seems like that's an easy task to do, is just take that little line and move it a little bit, and bam, there your project is. But it's not as easy as that seems for various reasons. Two reasons being, one, the access management. So once we touch that road, we affect different property owners and how their access to exist, existing, and how it will be in the future. And then secondly, it also affects the permit that we have. So permitting agencies, the Corps and OCRM and such, they like to look at projects holistically. So when you start breaking projects down, and then you re-permit projects, they take, they take action to that. So they would rather see the holistic approach versus bits and pieces. So in doing that, we have to really pay attention to what we do with the intersection and what any other future invisions are for any improvements beyond the intersection, what that looks like. Because if we move forward and don't reevaluate the environmental assessment, then we don't allow ourselves the opportunity to raise our hand for federal funds. So how do we juggle that? And that's something that we were tasked to take a look at. So we reengaged with Bluffton, I mean with HDR, the engineer of record, and rather than have a fee proposal, there's too many unknowns to just start fresh on this project with a fee proposal, we came up with, let's come up with some options and put those on the table. And then from there, once we decide on the option as far as the access is, then we can scope out and fee, provide a fee for the design of the entire intersection relocation. So we started work on that at the first of the year, and we worked with HDR in preparing those options. And that's what I have for you guys to see and talk about this evening. These options are, we haven't, we've talked about it with council, but we wanted to share it with you as Town Council. We own the road, the county, and the right-of-way, but all the land is within the town limits, and all the property owners are within the town limits. So we thought it was fitting that you guys, as far as access is concerned from the county standpoint and transportation, all these options that I'll be talking about are acceptable from a trafficability standpoint. However, they all have a pros and cons, of which we'd like to have both council and staff's input and us here tonight. So with that, we have the options. I'll go ahead and go through the options unless anybody has any questions thus far. All right? And I saw you guys have a long agenda, so I am trying to buzz through it.
We'll stop you.
All right. So if we could put the options up, and I know this is a little hard to see, and if, I'm not sure who's controlling the...
Tommy.
Oh, I can zoom in? Let's move my stuff. Just zoom in a little bit.
We can sit really good on our screen.
Okay, if you guys can see it, then great.
As long as the community that's looking on YouTube.
Okay. If you guys can see it, great, and I'll speak to it. So again, basically, we're moving the intersection from where it's located to the revised location, which is there shown. It's about 350 feet south of its current location. When we do that, we are moving the spacing, we're reducing the spacing of the, there's a stoplight up there at Publix at Lord Lutheran Church, and then at Lake Point Drive at Parkers. So we have pretty good spacing right now, and we're moving spacing further in one side and closer to the other, which is not preferred as far as the spacing on the south side. So in doing that, it's going to affect access in and out at that Lake Point Drive intersection, that Sandy Point subdivision. So in all the options, you'll see there to the left is, just south of Bluffton Parkway is Innovation Drive. So in all four options, you'll see that this stub is needed to help provide better access in and out of Sandy Point subdivision because of the access is going to be affected based off the move in this current condition. So this condition, what it does, if, right now Buckwalter, or the town's apartment, or condominium complex, is a full-access intersection. So they can come straight up to the signal, and they have a full access. In this condition, they are no longer at that signal, but they are provided with a right-in and a right-out. And then also on Bluffton Parkway, a left-in, but not a left-out. So if they wanted to turn left on the Bluffton Parkway, or excuse me, Buckwalter Parkway, they would have to turn right and go up north to the intersection at Publix and do a U-turn. So there's extra space at this intersection for U-turn movement, and then thus turn, come back southwardly. So this is by far the cheapest alternative. We don't have cost estimates on any of these alternatives as of yet, but this is the least impact and, least impact to the roadway and cheapest alternative. That is definitely an impact, a noticeable impact to the towns. They have less access than a full-access intersection, but this is option A. Any questions? All right. Option B.
Yeah, that's not what I see as option B. Oh, up here to the tab, it says all two approved. Is that not it right there? Oh, no, that's not it.
No, he was trying to get to it from the packet.
That does show, as you scroll through, that does show the original alignment and then the adjusted alignment. So we're not all without good.
Got to go way up to the top, I think.
Document.
Or go to number, that's not it. Click there. There you go.
There we go. Option B. All right. So option B. This option is providing that access to the towns, so they have full access to an intersection. It's not the intersection that was once in front of the subdivision, but this is, so they have access to the signal to the north through the Lord of the Lutheran parking lot and creates an access through that. The access in front of the subdivision would be a right-in, right-out only. So there would be a median that comes across and keeps that away. So again, the Innovation Drive that is still shown, and everything else is the same. So this too is, doesn't have as many moving parts as options C and D, but it does provide full access. We will have to traverse a wetland. You can kind of see that in the aerial. So there'll be some additional permitting, as well as additional roadway, so additional cost in option B.
I have a question on option B, which is one I think I like for the residents of Bluffton, because there are some areas that are not incorporated Bluffton. But I rode to the towns today. If you blow that up, but really between where you put the road and the red light, there are absolutely, there are curb cuts already. Is that set in stone? Because I don't think you've talked to the developer. Can we work around?
Yes, absolutely.
All of that, move it closer? It doesn't have to be exactly the way you have it.
That's great. So this is conceptual. So we can, we can, these are squiggly lines that we can kind of draw a little bit. So yes, we haven't coordinated with the stakeholders. This is our first attempt at coordinating with you all and then the public from thereafter. But yes, so that can move forward or backwards. Now that that's basically a driveway into the towns, there's not as many concerns. There is some concerns the closer it gets to Bluffton Parkway, but it can be moved.
But I remember in the past, it was a big deal for past councils on interconnectivity, and I believe in Kevin can let us know, but I believe all those projects, right and left, were actually approved because of the Parkway.
Okay.
So there was your connectivity from Lord of Life Lutheran to that commercial stub in front of towns, I'm not sure, but we can, we can work through it if that happens to be the option.
Well, and then, so that starts to, you kind of segue into the next option. So are there any other questions, or are you...
Jared, so basically with this, the old road, the existing road now would stay there?
No, it would be removed. So all these options, I didn't describe that. As the new intersection is realigned, the old alignment would be removed.
Well, he's, you don't see what he's pointing at.
This section between where you have the new road?
Uh huh.
You know, running parallel to Buckwalter?
Yes. That would stay. That's right.
But they'd have a right-in, right-out there as well.
So they could still come out and take a right on Buckwalter, or...
Correct. If they wanted to take a left, they would need to go up to the intersection, but if they wanted to be quick and take a right, they could come up to, yes.
So they're going to the intersection up there one way or the other? If they want to make, if they want to make a left?
That's right. Exactly.
Right.
Yep. Yep. Any other questions? All right. Option C. So then we start to see more interconnectivity. C and D really start to speak to interconnectivity. So same Innovation Drive, same location, the same northern access as shown in option B, but now we start to build the access to option, to down to the south. What this does, and if you can scroll just a little bit further to the, to the south. So what we're doing here is we're actually resetting the intersection at Lake Point Drive at the Parkers and shifting it to the south. And what that does, that helps us recapture our spacing. So our spacing, required spacing is 1,320 feet. In the initial two options, A and B, our spacing is reduced to a little bit less than 1,000, so it's not up to our typical standards. So this puts that back in place. And in this scenario, we start to get a better spacing in the 1,600 to 1,700 feet from actually both signals. So from Publix to the realignment, about 1,600 feet, and from the realignment to this new Lake Point Drive realignment, about 1,600 or 1,700 feet. So again, what that does, that helps with platooning and traffic and seamless interaction between signal and signal on the corridor. So what you can also see in here, and this is just for reference, this is not to say that any of this is to be constructed, but you can see the outline. Okay. Oh, look at there. Man, y'all got some cool tools.
I don't like that tool.
It does get you kind of sick a little bit if you do it too fast, so I'll play with it as gingerly. So, but you can see the outline of what's reflected as 5B. And two points just to make on this. One is that in all these options, the relocation is aligned such that if there was ever desire to continue, that it's set up for that. Secondly, that the first, where we have this crossing, north cross, north-south crossing on the 5B right there, so that would be where your first kind of driveway cut would be in a planned roadway beyond that. So there's, I'm saying that just to let you know that, that this is not, the line's drawn on a paper. It's all, it all goes to a greater plan. Whether those plans ever develop or not, that's to be determined. But what I really like about this one is, again, we recapture our spacing. Again, we start getting into more roads and more costs, but you can start to see this interconnectivity and access management and access road network. So the next option, D.
Could I ask one question before you go off?
Yep, yep.
Right here, the existing road coming out of Lake Point Drive now?
Yes.
Where you're showing the new road curving to the south and then, you know, coming up?
Yep.
Would that existing road be removed, or would that continue to be there forever?
That would be removed. That section.
Would we?
That's right.
It would come out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just an idea, once we go through this, it would be nice, whatever option is decided on, to white out what road, because it is confusing.
Absolutely. Yep, I appreciate that. We can make that. All right. So option D. So this kind of builds on option C. And if you scroll down a little bit further, the main part is to the south. So the northern is the same, the same access road to the Publix intersection. On this, we continue the southern connection to the towns, and we actually tie it into what could be a future connection to Woodbridge. So actually, you can see there in the aerial, there's a wooded area. That lot belong, as well as the perimeter around Woodbridge, belongs to the Homeowners Association. I don't know whether that was intended as a plan, as a future access or not, but for what we're talking about, it does marry up to this really well. In this scenario, we actually extend that road, that Woodbridge connection, down to the new aligned signal, and then also start picking up other, other properties. You can see the connectivity to the Cross Church there, as well as back to Parkers and the storage units. And again, just for reference only, you can see the red line of the 5B layout as it's, in its current layout from the previous iteration. So again, this one has a lot more to it than just a simple move the intersection. You start getting into other access management. And whether you build or don't build a future 5B, this does create a series of connectivity road, or connective roads that really create good access to several neighborhoods to provide multiple points of intersections. So that's where we are. Those are the options that our engineers come up with thus far. As far as the county, again, all these meet access. The preference from our point is just looking at the options C and D. It actually sets back the intersections. I think options A and B, from our standpoint, are more temporary as far as the, the spacing requirements. So if we only do A or B, at some point later, we would look at doing the intersection relocated to the south in C and D, but not necessarily part of this current relocation. So those are all the options that are there on the table, and I mean, I'll gladly take any questions or comments.
Questions, but I'll let others. Any questions or comments?
On this one, the, on this D, the signalization is at its best of the four options that you've just laid out. 1,700 is your minimum. Basically, the 2,500 is your max or your goal. So this plays out best of each scenario.
C and D, yeah, they have the same 1,600 or 1,700 foot spacing.
Question? I'll jump in. Clarification. If it was A and B, why isn't the red line highlighting 5B on either of those? Is that an oversight?
Yeah, that was not intentionally. It's an oversight. Yep.
I don't, well, two questions. I don't understand why they wouldn't, engineers or whoever looked at this for you, wouldn't have utilized the 5B network to a certain point. It looks like we're duplicating roads if we did D, and then one day 5B gets funded by somewhere, and now we have a duplicate road 100 feet away from each other almost. The second question, maybe you could help. Who's going to pay for the road to take you to the new water tower? Or do they need a road access?
So I don't know if they need, so we did coordinate with B for Jasper on their location, and in this segment, it's a, on the north-south connection, closest towards Buckwalter, sorry, the Bs get me confused. Closest to Buckwalter is right in that north or southeast quadrant, if that makes sense.
Can you touch that for me? I can't tell.
Below towns at Buckwalter.
It is right there.
What number? Where are you?
See that? Can you see my screen?
I do.
That's where, actually...
I think it's above, yeah, I think it's right where your pointer is.
Right where my cursor is, is where their proposed water tower location is. So we did coordinate with them and make sure what we were showing meshed up with what they were showing.
Can you do it in phases if everyone chose D? I mean, it's expensive and it's...
Yes.
willy-nilly a little bit, but do you have a phased approach if we were all to agree on the same option?
It could be phased, I think, from an engineering standpoint or permitting... It could be phased, I think, from an engineering standpoint or a permitting standpoint specifically. It would be better to design it all such that we can have a permit, collective permit, because that's, again, how the agencies try to, try to get folks to, to look at things. And then just construct a phase of the design permitted drawings.
How long does that permit good, Jared?
It's good up to, up to five years. It can be renewed. So even with the environmental assessment that we have now and talking with the engineers, the opportunity to renew it, there, they said it was very slight. So we have one that's sitting on the shelf, but it's almost to the point where it's even expired. But if we were to update a permit and get a, an updated set of plans, typically a permit's good for five, up to five years.
So you're on D right there. Is that D?
Yes, yes, that's D.
Why, a question. Why wouldn't you, um, y'all see where is the plus sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So down below is the, the shadowing of 5B. Why wouldn't we consider putting that feeder road at least to go the 5B route and take you, you know, at least it will continue? We have a north-south connector a little bit east of that.
Yep.
And Dan had mentioned it one time. What a great way to bring traffic off of 278 to provide that same access off of the road if needed. And I just feel like you're wasting money if we can't utilize what was already desired.
That was something that we talked about internally is maybe just extending the intersection that first, and I don't know the distance, but the first 600 or 700 feet, at least to the first where the water tower would be, if not all the way to where the Woodbridge north-south connector would be there. We did, those were thought about, but we didn't draw up an option for that. It could be an option. At that point, you're, you're also, it is a larger road, so you're carrying the four lanes. Are you, well, I'm not sure whether it would have to be four lanes, but anyways, that could be an option, so.
So where the, where the cursor is right now, the cross?
Yep.
Are you saying that the road that it's touching right there would actually move down to where the portion of 5B would, that she's talking about?
No, I'm saying that this section here, you could construct that section of 5B. So, so you really don't want, when you get close to the intersection, the goal is not to have driveways or curb cuts close to the intersection. So really where that curb cut is, where the water tower, that, that roadway, north-south road, is as close as we'd like a curb cut to the intersection.
So my, I guess the point I'm trying to make, and maybe you're addressing it, is you want 5B, you know that. And then, again, she's touching on the fact that if you come out of Willa Run and come back this direction with the 5B that you see there, you're still taking the traffic off 278, as she said. But if you went ahead and built that portion where you could plan for it, that road that I just talked about could be refigured where you've already built a portion of 5B, even if you didn't take it all the way to where Willa Run would be. So then you wouldn't need both of them.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. That's an option. I mean, we can definitely take that back to our council as well, as well as the public, to get that feedback.
I mean, even if it's the two-lane road to begin with.
Right.
You know, you're eliminating a road.
That's how Buckwalter was a two-lane, yep.
And, and maybe helping future, in the future, solve a problem.
Sounds like Dan's saying D makes more sense, C or D makes more sense with the spacing. And I know you haven't, I, I think we've got to help our buck, our towns at Buckwalter. I think if Woodbridge wants it, we need to help them. They're in the county, but we do listen to them when they mail and call us. Somehow, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the discussion is over this last little roadway that a lot of people voted for a long time ago, is, but I do think we've got to keep it on the books. I know we're going to try to put it on our LATS tip plan. So I'm kind of with Dan on how can we go back and Stu's here too. I'm glad he's here to listen and give feedback. How can we incorporate that just to keep it flowing, knowing that this realignment is really probably important as well?
Right, right.
So, so you see my pin?
I do.
This, this section of the parkway?
Goes away.
That goes away. So that's developable property, so to speak?
It's owned by somebody. Both sides, he's talking about the current parkway, maybe you can highlight it.
To the north of the existing Bluffton Parkway, on the west, on the west side of Buckwalter.
So the realignment up above where Beaufort Memorial has the property under contract. That, all that would go away.
That's right. So that, that is Beaufort County right of way. That would be returned to the landowner or, or whatever the acquisition would need to be.
One more comment, if I may.
Yeah, I mean, this is more of a workshop item, so y'all, I don't need to recognize it.
The, if you take and put your cursor on the, coming out of Woodbridge to the intersection right there, I'm sure you've already considered this. So if, if we went with this plan and we made the adjustment that I just talked about, where you potentially shift the road down into, into the area that potentially 5B could be, whether Woodbridge today wants to connect there or not, goodness, the way we're growing and the way the future will be, and this is what interconnectivity is all about, to give people more access and options for traffic flow, then I would leave a curb cut or even, the other road ties there anyway. So you'd have a natural tie there in the future, should Woodbridge not want to do it today. Maybe they want to do it 10 years from now when they hit gridlock on 278, you know?
Yeah. No, that makes, that makes a good sense. And there is some wetlands on all that road from the towns to the Woodbridge road. There's a lot of wetlands there. So potentially, especially as a phase or short-term or near-term, that if you move that section to the 5B area, then there's potentially some wetlands that might need mitigated.
So do y'all, do you under, we're not voting on anything, and do you understand what we're saying?
Yes.
That we could take it back?
Yes. So.
Like clear as mud?
No.
You're looking for option E.
That's right, no.
You're looking for option E, right?
There is an option E. Would you like us to color in and add it to you?
I can guess what you guys might color in. I understand the comments and we can, we can make some more alternatives. We'll have to coordinate, staffs can coordinate on, on come up, because, so this is us coordinating and presenting to you as council, but at some point, we also have to coordinate with the public stakeholders. So having a set of options, we're, in essence, without saying it, we are kind of repeating the EA process with the alternatives, kind of just what DOT is doing with 278. They had a whole bunch of alternatives and it narrowed down to a preferred alternative. So even if we had to recraft the environmental assessment, I think the work that we're doing through this process and the public presentation here at this workshop and then at future meetings could be folded in, should we choose to, to really finalize the EA process. But I do, I hear the comments, we can make some additional alternatives. I think in hearing you guys speak, that option A really doesn't, doesn't really seem like there's much interest for that, that we look to some type of connectivity. I think in all options, we showed the northern access. I don't think anybody was opposed to that northern access or any comments were made. And that more of the comments hearing you guys are, are kind of on the southern portion.
Oh, do decide on B, I just really, one changes their mind. Those red lines for 5B have to stay on the maps.
Yeah, we can.
It just looks like, we're not going to even consider it anymore, because I.
We can get them updated on all future options. And then also, like you said, white out the roads that are to be deleted.
And another thing, and I don't know if I sent it to you, Jared, but, and Terry remembers that, the mediation we all went through with two, the competing property owners, we were able to get that easement recorded with the county that's Innovation Drive.
Okay.
But once this is realigned, both agreed to also give two additional easements to connect to the parkway. So I think it'd be good to show those somehow, because once it's realigned, it goes into effect, right? We can get you that documentation.
Okay, yeah, if you can get that information, we can.
Stu would remember, he was part of that as well.
We can reflect that.
I think it'd be good to reflect everything we've worked hard on getting, so.
One thing to note, again, just to go back to, right now, we got commission to move forward with some relocation and $2.5 million. And again, we haven't updated the cost estimates, but I can pretty much guarantee you that the only one that fits into $2.5 million is option A. So once we decide on an option, we'll also have to figure out how we're going to fund this and bring this to life financially. So that'll be another topic for another day.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One thing I would ask for y'all to consider as you go back and look at the options is to reach out to us to build the plans that we have off that one. Currently, where the path is going up to the back entrance to Buckwalter out of the towns runs through where a building used to sit, and there's supposed to be another building back.
Okay.
So the climate, we can help guide where it would need to go, especially with the development agreements that are in place.
Yeah, that'd be great.
One, one last question for me. LATS is looking at their long-range plan right now. Have you shared any of these suggestions with them?
Not on these four options, no. So they're looking at the larger network, but this is stuff on, they have some specific areas that we can, we can, we'll definitely share it with them.
The reason is obvious, because I know they're looking at a larger puzzle, but they're also do the LOS ratings on the parkway where they are today, and they will do their projections on how they will be later.
Yep, excellent, yep.
Two go hand in hand to me, so.
Absolutely, yep. Well, that's all I have unless you guys have further questions.
Are you clear?
I think I'm going to write some notes when I get in.
And, and you'll send him the, the easements on that? These are basically feeder roads for a bigger, for the, like LATS. LATS is the bigger picture.
That's right.
These are the feeder roads that can connect.
That's correct.
So I think whatever can connect the neighborhoods, and I agree with Dan, we don't know Woodbridge. They, they have, they've never had a red light, so we got to figure out what works for them. The towns at Buckwalter has always had a red light, and it's probably turned over a dozen times in 15 years.
Yep.
So they're used to red lights, so how can we connect them? And Lake Point Drive, we all have to remember, that was a temporary red light.
Yes.
All because of a roadway that never got finished, because every other road project got over budgeted. Everything was over budget. And we had to make do, and I will say, we would not have approved a lot of this had we not known, we would have not had a secondary access to 278. The question, and I know it's going to come up with some of your council members, is, oh my gosh, we're just going to explode in commercial growth because of another parkway. There's so many wetlands in that 5B. I have not seen where there's any room for that.
Right.
Five Bluffton Parkway growth to occur. So I hope we can all get that information to help calm some people in and out of Bluffton, and we can, we can work on that.
And I would ask, and we'll get, Steve and I'll get with you and your staff later, as we develop these and are ready to take these to the public, just for that joint effort, again, this, in this municipality and in the county, it's mixed. So we'll, we can spearhead that together when we get to that point.
If you commit that, that money to some portion of it and we can phase it, maybe it's a, a little bit of a, maybe it's B.
Yes. So C and D started getting into the network, and A and B are kind of, I'm sorry, I.
B is only, B adds the towns at Buckwalter's access to the red light.
A is the simplest, but not full access. B is the next simplest, but provides that full access. So.
B plus D plus E.
There, there you go.
Y'all have anything against any of that? Just appreciate the workshop. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you understand this?
Yes, well, it's always easy to understand. I do think.
Okay. Good. Well, I think we don't like A.
Yep, I got it.
There you go.
Got it loud and clear.
So we added E.
And D definitely looked like it was the best.
D was the best, if you can add, if you can incorporate the parkway.
We'll just start shaking those money trees and.
Shake it, you can do it.
We'll get them all. So.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good. And you'll get with staff and we'll all hear updates. So thank you very much. And Stu, thank you for coming as well. We are on to formal items. First is our fiscal 2022 budget to provide for budget reduction and funding changes for the loss of vehicle tag fee revenue, which we still had it, and to allocate sources of revenue for said funds to carry forward unspent expenditures for the 2021 budget to the 2022 budget. This is first reading. Chris, how are you?
Good evening, very well, thank you. All right, so this is a, our annual carry-forward budget amendment, but there's a couple other components because of a few things that occurred. So here are the three main components. We have the carry-forward funds for unfinished projects and contracts, which is typical, what you see at this time of year. We also have adjustments for the loss of the tag fee revenue, which I'll explain more in a, in a moment. And we also have the use of and transfers of prior fund balance, which I'll talk about where we ended last year. The carried forward amounts, these are the ones that reflect the projects or initiatives that were planned to be completed last fiscal year, but will need to be carried forward for various reasons. Again, this is primarily your, your CIP projects, which are multi-year projects. The budget adjustments are a result of a recent state Supreme Court ruling that interpreted a new change in state law that questioned the legality of the vehicle tag fee assessed by many counties and municipalities throughout the state. So based on their ruling, the tag fee was no longer a legal fee for us to assess unless it was directly tied to those, the benefit that we used the money for was directly tied to the individuals who were paying it. So it was a very narrow definition of how you can use those, those fee revenues. So a lot of counties lost this revenue throughout the state, as well as municipalities, including us, which we started a year and a half ago. It, we were able to assess the fee through last fiscal year, but starting in, in July, the county order no longer assessed on the, the vehicle bills. So there is a current effort to amend the legislation, to change the language back that would allow the tag fees again. And that effort is moving forward. I think there's a couple of counties in the northwest area of the state that are leading that initiative, and it, it seems to have some favorability in legislature, but we'll, we'll find out by year's end. But the revenue loss here for this fiscal year that we're adjusting for is $473,000. Looking at prior year fund balance, FY '21 revenues came in at 23.6 million. Our expenditures were at 17, almost 17.8. So the addition to fund balance at the end of last fiscal year is 5.8. Now, about a million of that is related to the ARPA revenue. So from a budgetary standpoint, it was more of 4.8, but a million of that is ARPA, and I'll, I'll break that down in a moment. These are the proposed adjustments. You have the carry-forward column broken down by what is being carried forward from the general funds, SWU debt, and the carry-forward funds there. At the bottom, the 2.2 is primarily CIP fund. The general fund budget adjustments, you can see the loss of these 473,000 in tax fee revenue. There, it's a housing remediation grant program, which I will discuss in, in the next slide, and then the use of prior year fund balance of 195,000 to, to make up the gap. And the rest will come in from budget cuts, or proposed budget cuts. And then the use of prior year fund balance, we have at 4.5. And again, I'll break down that expenditure on the next slide. So here we have it. The total carry-forward is 4.3. The total carry-forward is 4.3. Again, the majority of that is CIP, as you see. There, those are CIP ones. The budget adjustments, we had several position vacancies that we achieved savings throughout the year, which we're capturing, as well as a reduction in a part-time position that achieved that $197,000 in position adjustment savings. There's some minor adjustments in public works budget, the townwide budget, and then the housing remediation pass-through grant program, which is additional revenue and additional expense, so it's a net zero. What that is, is a program to assist homeowners receiving other external grants. Most of those grants require them to put the money upfront. Individuals who are in financial need usually don't have that cash to put up front, so we would act as the fiduciary. We would help fund the project and then draw down on the grant on their behalf to reimburse ourselves for the amount that we spend, and that would be run through the Affordable Housing Committee.
Funds that are coming through, one from BJEOC and one from Hill Hall, that we're kind of being the pass-through for the money, so we want to make sure that it's accounted as we're the pass-through for it.
Oh, we'll see when that comes back to us to put it at a zero. Will we get another update from you? Okay.
That project's done, that money.
Okay.
Use of prior year fund balance, so we have a officer retention pay adjustments. This is a program, there's some neighboring jurisdictions that have upped the starting salary for experienced officers, and there was concern about that drawing away some of our experienced officers from the current pay level that they're at. So this would basically bump up pay for officers with some experience in order to retain them within our police officer that persuaded away from the town to a neighboring jurisdiction. We also have in here the use, designation of $2 million, or transfer of $2 million over into the land acquisition program. There's budget, as you know, a budget of half a million dollars every year, and this would be initial $2 million in the land acquisition program. We also have another $600,000 proposed for the affordable housing CIP program. And then if you go down here, we have fund balance designations. So these are designations, these are not approved budget expenditures, but we are simply designating fund balance for these potential programs that are coming over the next couple months. As you all know, ARPA, obviously, we are required to reserve those funds for the ARPA program, and that, those proposals will come to you in the next couple months after we hear from the state on what they are allocating.
That's just half of what we, because I think our totals went down.
That is correct. Capital asset reserve, as you all know, we expanded the capital asset reserve this past budget go-around, as we're proposing to use 250,000 of the prior year fund balance to beef up that reserve a little bit more. We have a preservation grant program, we're designating, proposing to designate funds to seed that program, as well as proactive preservation program. Again, these are just designations, these are not approved budget programs, which you all know will be on future agendas. And then a tree remediation program of $100,000. So that is a quick overview of how the budget management uses of funds are proposed and put together for you. Are there any questions on any of these specific uses of funds?
Sorry I interrupted you in that. Any other questions? Hey.
Yep, go ahead.
We met, when we talked last month about proactive preservation, and we're gonna have the work session next month and come with the historic preservation programs, which you see there with the preservation grant, the proactive, and the remediation, we're all setting those funds aside for those potential programs that we plan to bring to council, so once they're adopted, we have a pot of funds that we can implement. I just wanted to, last month, part of the question was, we want to make sure that as we adopt these programs, that we're, we're gonna make sure they're able to work, we're setting some of the funds aside so that when those come.
Any other questions?
No money than that.
It's a start. You gotta start with something.
Round one.
Fred, think about at land acquisition. For years, it, we didn't realize it didn't carry over, and it went away, but we didn't buy it, and I think it was you that kind of pushed the envelope for that, and we built a quite a balance, so I think. Okay, it is first reading, or do you want to, did you finish?
Nope, that's, that's just a consolidated schedule that's in your packets, and this is the proposed motion.
So if no other questions, is there a motion approved for a string of an ordinance amending the town of Bluffton fiscal year 2022 budget to provide for expenditures of certain funds and to allocate sources of revenue for the said funds to remove the vehicle tag fee and carry over unspent expenditures and encumbrances from the 2021 to the 2022 budget?
I'll make that motion.
Read it. Fred, second, any discussion? Chris, we don't thank our staff enough, but you're up here, you do a fabulous job.
Thank you.
And I think all of us feel that way.
Especially when you're talking fast and I can't understand you.
And you get, and you get through it.
Put a lot of trust in you.
And that's Brian that was on, and Kevin, everyone in this room, and that's, that's, we really appreciate all of what you do, and it's tough right now, so.
Thank you.
Chris, I don't like to agree with Lisa, but I do agree.
He really does like to, he just doesn't like to do. Okay, all in favor, step by step, opposed? We have a reveal we have to get with. So Natalie, jump forward, let's move it on.
Yes.
I'm gonna be recusing myself from one anyway, so if you want to do all the other ones instead of that one, then I could just go.
After you talked to Terry about, okay. Go Natalie, and if we could do arts and seafood, well, it's only two.
Yes.
If we could do arts and seafood last. Does he need to sign a recusal form? Kim, can you make sure he has it? Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. There are two applications, or applicants for this quarter ending June 30, 2021, totaling $86,650, and you'd like to go with the Hilton Head Symphony Orchestra first?
Yes, please.
Okay. They are requesting support for the Free Outdoor Pops concert to be held in conjunction with the Seafood Arts and Seafood Festival on October 21, and they are requesting $16,650 for advertising and facilities expenses.
Go through both of them, and then we'll do it in then.
All right. And then the Historic Bluffton Arts and Seafood Festival is requesting $70,000 in support and advertising, fire and security services, and tourist transportation. The festival is scheduled to begin on October 16 and run through the 24th this year. The committee has fully recommended to fund both eligible requested amounts. There's currently over $1.7 million available for distribution, and that is, again, split between both local and state accommodations tax dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on either of them? We have limited people here, so we'll just rely on Natalie if we have any questions. Let's move, if you could, my computer just went quirky, so.
Would you like the motion?
So the first is.
Sorry, I'm trying to get down there.
It doesn't matter, I can go from it, from the first part.
Almost there, almost there, sir. I'm trying.
No, you're good, it was fine with the first page.
Other information.
And I love it because it, I read all this stuff. I love seeing their background and making sure we're good, and you could really go back to the top, Natalie, you're up there, and Larry, you know.
I know, as soon as I switch it, I'm gonna be.
It's okay, it's okay. So first, just scroll to the very top.
I got it.
You're killing me. So the first is Hilton Head Symphony Orchestra, they asked for $16,650, it was recommended by the committee for $16,650. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Somebody?
Second.
Is any discussion on that? All in favor, step by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Larry, you may recuse yourself.
Yes.
Will you go talk to Terry like you were gonna? Next is the grant, the Historic Bluffton Arts and Seafood Festival, Larry Tumer has recused himself. The request was 70,000, the recommendation was 70,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, step by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. We are working on, I know we, best we can, to let more people know we have money.
Yes, yes, and the chamber is also assisting as well.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have consent agenda items, are there any that anybody wants more information on? If not, is there a motion to approve the items under the consent agenda? There's a second? Any discussion? All in favor, step by saying aye.
Aye.
I would say that's four, and Larry wasn't here. It's next, is there a motion going to executive session related to the acceptance of a donation of real property in Bluffton Historic District pursuant, I see somebody, Act 3478-2?
If you want to record his vote now that he's.
Do you want to vote for the consent agenda, or does it matter? We can put that you weren't here.
We have a majority.
We're fine, we're fine, thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session for that topic?
So moved.
Your second? Any discussion? I don't think there'll be action out of executive session, Terry? Okay, there will be no action, I don't see press here. All in favor, step by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're in executive session. Whoever isn't coming in with us, have a wonderful. Whoever isn't coming in with us, have a wonderful. Thank you.